The June meeting of the Harnett County Board of Education is now in order. Good evening, so good to see each of you tonight. Thank you so much for coming to be with us this evening. If everyone will please stand for invocation and our pledge. And I'd like to ask Mr. Don Goff, if he'd lead us in a pledge of allegiance.
You will join me in prayer. Gracious God and Heavenly Father, we thank you, Lord, for the privilege of being here tonight. Lord, we pray that we would do your business, Lord, for the best part of Harnett County schools, staff and students. Lord, we thank you, Father, for being here with us tonight, Lord, for the awards, Father. We thank you for the dedication and the service that they give to our children in Harnett County, Lord. And we pray that things that the board would do would be for the best. Lord, we just thank you for a beautiful day today. Lord, just be willing to guide us and direct us and keep us safe, carry us home safely tonight. Bless everyone that's here, Father, for the sins things we ask in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Mr. Goff. And now I'd like to ask Mr. John Hare if he'd lead us into Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and you may be seated.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we amend the published agenda by removing item seven, which is School Board Policy Update from the consent agenda.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Chairman votes aye.
Abate, aye.
Gagne, aye.
Judge Brown, aye.
Hearing no nay votes, the motion is approved.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the agenda as amended.
Have a motion and I have a second. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, the chairman votes aye.
Abate, aye.
Gagne, aye.
Hearing no nay votes, the motion is approved and the agenda is approved as amended. Right, we have several special presentations tonight, and our first one is the Harnett County Purple Star District Award. And this will be our Assistant Superintendent, Mr. Jermaine White, and Mr. Howard Lattimore, the Department of Public Instruction Military Consultant. Mr. White.
Chairman Powell, members of the board, thank you so much. We are honored this evening to have Mr. Howard Lattimore, who is our North Carolina Department of Public Instruction Military Consultant, with us this evening to do a special presentation to the district.
Good evening. All right. Thank you for having me here this evening. I am Mr. Howard Lattimore. I'm the State Military Consultant out of Raleigh, and I bring greetings from State Superintendent Mo Green. In 2019, during the 2019-2020 school year, the Department of Public Instruction launched the Purple Star Designation. That year, we awarded 132 schools. This past month, we awarded 453 schools. I think that's a round of applause for North Carolina. During that timeframe, during the 2019-2020 school year, Harnett County schools were the only school district where all of their schools were awarded. And six years later, six years later, all six consecutive years, Harnett County schools have still had all of their schools each year become Purple Star designated schools. With the hard work of Mr. White and his designees and your superintendents here in Harnett County, Harnett County is now considered a legacy, a legacy, the first legacy school district for the Purple Star Award. Okay? And I would like to bring the board chair, Superintendent Matthews, Mr. White, and Natalie. Is Natalie here? My clerk, Natalie. Is she here?
Tucker Farrell.
Of course she did. All right, and to accept this award, and let's give them a round of applause for the hard work they've been doing. And this is taking care of our military-connected students and everything like that. This is taking care of our military-connected students, and all school districts are not doing the great work that they're doing here in Harnett County schools, and we have to come down here. I have to come down here and say thank you, and Superintendent Matthews, welcome, and I know we have a good relationship, and we're going to continue to do the great work.
Thank you, Mr. Lattimore. We greatly appreciate you coming to be with us tonight, and that is something we're proud of, that legacy. Because it's a great legacy for us to be proud of, and just hope that'll encourage other systems in the state to try to copy us on that. So thank you very much. Next, we have our 25-year service resolution, and that would be Ms. Thompson.
Chairman Powell and members of the board, many of you attended our May 12th 25-year celebration over at Gentry, where we honored our 25-year recipients, but tonight it's my honor to be able to read the resolution of commendation for those 25-year recipients into the official minutes of the June meeting. We typically do that at the school board meetings, but we had so many this year that we would not fit in this room and this facility to be able to honor them, so we had a separate reception for them. Whereas, the Harnett County Board of Education takes pride in the achievements of its staff members. And whereas, the Harnett County Board of Education believes that it is significant and noteworthy when members of staff serve in the noble task of education for a substantial portion of their professional life. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Harnett County Board of Education does here and pay honor and tribute to all of the 25-year recipients upon completion of 25 years of service in the education of our youth. And be it further resolved that the record of this commendation by the Harnett County Board of Education be permanently recorded in the official minutes of the board. This is the second day of June 2025, Willington, North Carolina, Harnett County Board of Education, Joseph W. Powell, Chairman, W. Brooks Matthews, Secretary. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson. And a special thank you to each of the persons that are being recognized 25 years. That is a great accomplishment, and particularly in this day and age when we have a more transient society and people don't like, during our time, and some of us older than me, you know, pretty much stuck with one job or one or two, and just having somebody say it was 25 years, that's just a great distinction and a great honor, so we thank you for your service. We're going back to Ms. Thompson now for our bus driver perfect attendance recognition.
Chairman Powell and members of the board, this is a significant honor because these drivers have driven every day this year, and they've been there during tough weather, feeling bad, difficult circumstances. They've been a constant in the lives of our boys and girls in this district, and for that, I am truly grateful because here, as you well know, bus drivers are not in abundance because we have a difficult time getting our bus drivers trained, not because we don't have enough drivers, but because we have a difficult time getting them trained. And so I am eternally thankful for the hard work they do each and every day to get the students here safely and home each day safely, and they take care of our most trusted possessions. And at this time, I want to call up the Director of Transportation, Mr. Yara Parker, and Kelly Frock. And I was trying to think of a word for Kelly because her job is very encompassing, but she does a lot of coordinating and work with the drivers as far as scheduling and that kind of stuff, so Kelly will assist him in calling the names, so they can come forward at this time.
First, we have Ms. Tracy O'Quinn. She drives for Anderson Creek and South Harnett Primary. Next, we have Ms. Tamra Sell. She also drives for Anderson Creek and South Harnett Elementary. Next, we have Saran Price. She drives for Andrew Elementary and North Harnett Primary. Next, we have Tanisha Holmes. She drives for Coach Irwin Elementary, but I'm not sure that she is here tonight. And then we have Ms. Mary Smith from, she drives for Dunn Elementary, and I'm not sure if she's here yet. Yeah, I forgot. Next, we have Mr. Paul Starling. He drives for Dunn Elementary. Next, we have Mr. Benjamin Ronza. He drives for Irwin Elementary. Next, we have Ms. Keisha Campbell. She drives for Harnett Central Middle. Next, we have Ms. Monique Warren Clegg. She also drives for Harnett Central Middle. Next, we have Ms. Melinda Vandergriff. She also drives for Harnett Central Middle. We have Amy Erp. She drives for the Early College, but I'm not sure that she's here. And we have Ms. Rebecca Adams. She also drives for the Early College. Next, we have Olivia Otto Moreno. She drives for Lillington Shawtown, but I don't think she is here tonight. Next, we have Mr. Leonzo Edwards. He drives for Lillington Shawtown Elementary. Next, we have Ms. Judith Kruger. She drives for Northwest Harnett Elementary. Next, we have Ms. Cherie Hernandez. She drives for Overheals Elementary. Next, we have Ms. Desiree McCormick. She also drives for Overheals Elementary. Next, we have Ms. Elizabeth Lehman. She drives for Overheals High School. Next, we have Mr. James McLean. He drives for Triton High School. And last but not least, we have Ms. Melissa Parton. She drives for Western Harnett High School. That's the end of our recognition tonight.
And again, thank you very much. Right, next, we have the pacing guide development staff. That will be Ms. Ferguson, assisted by Ms. Tyson, Mr. Mace, and Ms. Church. So, Ms. Ferguson.
Good evening, Chairman Powell, members of the board. Tonight, we are proud to recognize a dedicated group of Harnett County educators who have spent the past year developing high-quality pacing guides, common formative assessments, and instructional resources. Their commitment to collaboration and excellence has resulted in tools that support effective teaching and promote student success across our district. We thank them for their hard work and lasting contributions to our schools. I have asked the district leadership to call out their names, and Mr. Matthews, if you'll join us and shake their hands and take their pictures. You're looking at the best of the best. They have worked very hard this year. The entire group is not here, but we sincerely thank you for everything you have done for our students.
We'll start with the K-5 group. Amber Anderson. Dusty Bingham. Anna Coats. Tanya Davenport. Susan Searls. Caroline Wilson. Thank you for being an extraordinary group of ladies. You do a wonderful job.
Good evening. And now for the middle school teachers that helped us this year and drove our pacing guides. First is Ms. Andrea Abate. Mrs. Karence Edwards. Okay, all right. Some of these are not here, and I'll go ahead and read these in order. Ms. Ashley Arnold. Mr. Billy Booth. Mr. Roderick Boatnight. Ms. Megan Floyd. Elizabeth Gravine. Kirsty Harkum. Rachel Henehosa. Mr. Justin Josie. Gravine, Kirsty Harkum, Rachel Henehosa, Mr. Justin Josie. Mrs. Melissa Lassiter. Ms. Morgan Ludiger. Ms. Brittany McNamara. Ms. Frances McNeil. Ms. Margaret McNeil. Ms. Karen Peterson. Ms. Karen Rhodes. Catherine Schwabel. Ms. Laura Spillman. And then the remainder, Heather Taylor, Lisa Testin, Cameron Turlington, Megan Walton, and Wendy White. Let's give these a round of applause.
Okay, I'm going to read the 912 teachers that helped with pacing guides this year. Jose Eric Bakong. We have quite a few who couldn't be here tonight, but we'll make sure they get their plaques. Jessica Betts, Colton Copeland, Joe Easley, Tony Frensky, Jennifer Fuller, Shannon Godfrey, Samantha Grimes, Anthony Herant, Trayvon Hazelrigg, Carrie Johnson, Stephanie Jordan, We have hers. We have hers. We'll get.
Go get your picture.
Patricia Schaefer. Sandra Skipper. And Amika Watson.
And Chairman Powell, I'd just like to also thank Mr. Mace, and Ms. Tyson, and Mrs. Church for leading this group. And several couldn't make it tonight because of ballgames and family engagements, but again, thank you so much for the work.
Thank you, Ms. Ferguson. Thank you for all of your hard work for this very important project. Next on the agenda is public comment, but we didn't have anyone to sign up, so we will not have that tonight. So moving along, our next item on the agenda is our superintendent update, and that is Mr. Matthews.
Thank you, Chairman Powell, members of the board. I do want to begin by thanking those of you who were able to attend some of the mini-year-end events that we had for the last six weeks or so. We typically enjoy celebrating at the end of the school year. The last week of school for students was week before last. We had a full last day of school, which is a little bit unusual, but since we were testing throughout the day, we did not have an early release. And of course, I was a little bit curious to see how the bus return was going to go that day, but thanks to Mr. Pearson, Mr. Parker, and all the transportation folks, everything went really well. The buses got back really early, I thought, and everything was fine, and so I really appreciate all their efforts to make all that come to fruition in a very positive manner. The last week of school for our teachers and 10-month employees was last week. Friday was an optional workday. And of course, we celebrated graduations last week with our graduating seniors. We kicked the graduation events off on Tuesday morning with our Early College, followed by Star and Virtual Academy after that. On Wednesday, we celebrated with Overheals and Western Harnett High School, and on Thursday with Harnett Central High School and Triton, and enjoyed all of those festivities and all the excitement that went along with that, with parents and families and friends celebrating with their graduates. Today, we began our summer school and our summer working hours. During the summer, we will work for 10-hour days, Monday through Friday, until the week of August 4th, when we'll go back to a regular five-day, eight-hour-a-day schedule. Would also like to celebrate with you, Ms. Dawn Young, who has been accepted to participate in the North Carolina Principal and Assistant Principals Association Early Career Principals Academy, which will go on throughout the next, or begin this summer and go on throughout the next school year. Basically, one meeting every month or two. And I would just close by congratulating Mr. Abate, who will be celebrating a birthday, I believe, this month, this week, I guess, the 6th of June, which will be a birthday for him, so happy birthday to you. And unless y'all have some specific questions for me, that concludes my report, Mr. Chair.
Are there questions for Mr. Matthews? Thank you. Next, we'll have our auxiliary services update. That is Mr. Pearson.
Thank you, Chairman Powell, members of the board. Biggest update I want to provide to you is that, beginning today, we began our summer meal program. So we are offering free meals to any student age, or any child, age 1 through 18. They do not have to be a Harnett County school student. Offering that at four local community centers. Boone Trail Community Center, Anderson Creek Community Park, Jack Marley Park, and Irwin Park. And that runs each day from approximately 11:15 for about an hour or so. We have the details of that on our website, but certainly want to get the word out there into the community, and so we'll be doing some of that. I've already done some Facebook posts and whatnot, but really proud to be able to provide that for the community throughout the summer, and I think participation continues to increase. It's about our third year in doing that. So excited about that, and thank Ms. Brown and her staff for putting that together. Believe it or not, the preparations for open house next school year have already begun, and that is the summer cleaning plan that custodians have been given, floors and other projects that are happening. So that is off to a great start. There was a head custodian meeting today to make sure they're lined up and ready for that as we, you know, these seven, eight weeks we have until kids are back in the building are very valuable to that team, and they're looking forward to making our schools shine again. So we thank them for that hard work. You'll receive an invite on this from Ms. Farah shortly, but we do have groundbreaking ceremony for Flatwood scheduled for June 23rd, so watch your inbox for that invite. I believe it's at 9:00 AM, and so we'll set up a formal groundbreaking out there at the site. Dirt is being moved out there, and so we'll get out there and get a groundbreaking before they start putting up foundations and those kind of things. Prep work's happening now. Construction continuing at Lillington Shawtown. They are still on target for their completion date of December 2nd. Mr. Johnson is meeting with them every couple of weeks to try to keep them on track for that, so we're still looking good there. Athletics wrapped up the end of the year, pretty much coincided the week right before school got out. A lot of success from various teams. Triton and Overheals girls soccer both made the playoffs. Harnett Central, Overheals, and Triton baseball made the playoffs with Triton advancing to the third round. We had a variety of regional qualifiers and state qualifiers for track at different schools, and certainly congratulations again to Kevin Spears. You may remember, we recognized him for the indoor triple jump state championship. He repeated as the outdoor triple jump state champion for the 3A division. So congratulations to Kevin as a two-time state champion this year. That's a great accomplishment for him. He graduated from Harnett Central last Thursday. Lastly, for me, kind of a unique component of the update, you will see in the consent agenda approval of a field trip for Overheals JROTC and their military summer camp. Want to bring this to your attention because we are still not 100% sure on the charter bus company, because that is provided by Cadet Command, and they are still letting them know who that's going to be. We have provided the charter bus list to Cadet Command. We will make sure we have insurance verification, do the bus inspection as we normally would, but just want to kind of be upfront with you all that we don't 100% know that charter bus company yet, and when you guys are approving that field trip, just want you to know that. Unless you have questions for me, that concludes my update.
Are there questions for Mr. Pearson? Thank you, Mr. Pearson. Moving along, we have curriculum and instruction, and that is Ms. Ferguson.
Chairman Powell, members of the board, we have wrapped up our end-of-year testing in grades 3 through 12. Our end-of-year testing includes EOGs in grades 3 through 8, EOCs in grades 9-12, and CTE in grades 9-12. The preliminary data is looking positive, and we're very optimistic. I wanted to give a shout-out to our school testing coordinators and our district testing team. These groups did a phenomenal job during testing. We had a very smooth testing season because of their hard work. As you know, this year, the state allowed us to remediate and retest students during the school year. Our schools did a fabulous job with this quick turnaround, and in our retesting, an additional 631 proficiency scores were made. That is huge, so we're very thankful for the schools for their work on that. Lafayette Year Round is remediating retesting this week. As you know, they're a little bit behind in their schedule compared to the traditional. The reporting of test scores will be somewhat delayed this year. August 7th, the State Board of Education, they approved the science assessment standard setting. As you know, we have new standards. August 12th is when we should expect our science test scores. And then it'll be August the 27th before they provide preliminary embargoed audit files to us as far as school performance grades and school designations. So just to let you know, it'll be a little bit later this year. And earlier in the year, we talked about our concerns with the science test and shared the information about the standard setting and the new test, so we'll keep you updated on that. Our focus on walkthroughs and feedback, they continue right up to the end of the school year. The top five administrators for walkthrough completion this year are Johnsonville Elementary School, Triton High School, Harnett Central Middle School, Highland Middle School, and Dunn Elementary School. I also want to give a shout-out to our instructional coaches this year, who have done a great job of completing walkthroughs. Their purpose is different than the principal. The principal's there, you know, think about evaluative, sharing concerns, expectations. The instructional coach's job is there providing support and feedback. And our coaches did a great job this year, and I wanted to shout out our top finishers there. Mrs. Ann Fennell at Triton High School, Mrs. Elena Wilifert at Coach Irwin Middle School, and Ms. Alicia Ferguson, no relation, at Western Harnett High School. Ms. Ferguson completed 601 walkthroughs this year, which is amazing. PD continued this month. We had those extra days at the end of the year this year, and we took advantage of those. On May the 28th, there was a math PD for our sixth-grade teachers, and the feedback was very good. On May 29th, we had dyslexia training. May 30th, another middle school math PD. And today, reading research began, PD began. We also have several opportunities throughout the summer for PD. As you know, traditional summer school started today and runs through June 6th. Traditional summer school at Lafayette Year Round will be June 16th through the 20th. Reading camp for our primary grades 1 through 3 will be July 9th through the 29th. That's Monday through Thursday from 8 to 3. Summer trek for our grades 4 through 8 will be July 14th from 8 until 1 at Western Harnett Middle School. And then, of course, we have our incoming kindergarten students, our summer splash, July the 21st through the 24th. That's all sites with kindergarten, and that's from 8 to 12 each day. We received great news this morning that on Friday, between 1:15 and 1:45, Book Harvest is delivering 1,000 free books that we can distribute to our students in our summer program, so we want to thank them for that. And those are the updates that I have for you tonight, unless you have questions.
Are there questions for Ms. Ferguson? Okay, thank you, Ms. Ferguson. Next on our agenda is the human resources update, and that is Ms. Thompson.
Good evening, Chairman Powell, and members of the board. I bring some good news tonight. I'm excited. I'm going to start back with my monthly updates on hiring here in the district, and we are in a significantly better place than we were last year at this time as far as classroom hires go. Last year, on June the 4th, 2024, we had 41 vacancies. And today, and I think we have a few less, Ms. Taylor, I just remembered one, so I marked one more off the list, we only have 19 classroom vacancies. So for me, that is very significant, and the hard work of the schools and principals and the R&amp;Rs is really paying off, so we're really proud of those numbers. That is the same for enhancement teachers. Last year, we were at 21. Today, we're at 14. And our EC and our, we have 21 there and 40 classified, and that's kind of in line with where we've been in the past, so we still are, we're working on that as we go, so there's some good news there, certainly. The R&amp;R's hosted a TA-to-teacher information session on May 27th. We had multiple EPPs or colleges there, and some, there are some other folks that provide teacher leadership instruction that were in attendance, and so we had 29 registered folks to attend that, and the feedback was very positive. We also used that as an opportunity to talk about our TA-to-teacher program that's involving with, that's capitalizing on EC positions, so we worked with folks there that day as well. On June 5th, the R&amp;R's hosted an aspiring teacher leaders mini-conference at Gentry, and the key role here is that we hope to have some skill learning that helps teachers that want to transition to leadership roles in the future. We're excited to share that we have 44 international candidates that have been hired and placed for the upcoming school year. 37 of those were personally screened by the R&amp;R staff, so many of these folks have been double-screened, so we have great hopes for them. We are committed to providing the best support for them in the upcoming year. Each first new international teacher will be paired with a designated teacher ambassador at their school who will serve as a mentor and provide ongoing training and support for them throughout the year. Tonight, we did honor our bus drivers with perfect attendance, and we're so proud and thankful for them. Bus driver training will continue through the summer, and remember, it's kind of a slow process because we train two people a week, so it's a steady but sure process that we're going through. We have 21 employees here waiting to go through driver training. We had a bus class last week, and the number has changed from 17, and I didn't write the new number down, but I'll tell you, but, so employees are working to pass their DOT physicals and get their permits over the summer. We're going to hold a National Board Certification interest meeting on June 3rd for interesting, interested educators who want to pursue their certification during the upcoming school year. They get detailed information, calls, clarification about the process. We're holding it virtually to accommodate schedules, one at 9 and one 3. Both will cover the same information, and already 60 educators have signed up, so we're excited about that. Our Growing Greatness Program will kick off on on Monday, June 9th. And we look forward to working with these future teachers this summer. So if you want to stop by and see them, let me know and I'll try to arrange that. We're especially excited about this. On May the 8th, eight faculty members from North Carolina State University School of Education toured four of our school sites to host six transformational scholars for their student teaching next year. We are one of the counties that can participate in this program. They have to teach in a, in a district such as ours to complete the program. So potentially, these students can be placed at Anger, Northwest Harriet, Harriet Central Middle, or Harriet Central High School. They were able to look at several classrooms and we're very excited about hosting these students because they have to work here, as I said, for their new teacher pipeline program. So we're very excited. We've also processed nearly 500 one-year contracts and 756 two-year contracts for the next school year based on approvals at the last board meeting. And we are busy onboarding for the 25-26 school year. As you know, we worked really hard on our NESA's evaluations to make that process better. And it was so, it was very much improved this year. We were, most folks were current with timelines and provided meaningful feedback early and often, which is our, was our goal. So we're super appreciative of the efforts of all of our principals and all the directors that helped with this. And we're looking, we're looking forward to continuing to streamline this process for the 25-26 school year. We are implementing a new classified evaluation tool. We've had the old one for quite some time. This one is in line with the other, some of the same guidelines and expectations that are involved with the other, except this language on this tool aligns with the NESA's language. So it's the same language that classified and certified will be using. And so we're, we are working on that for the summer. We, as you know, there is a plan for summer leadership for our principals to work on the NESA's evaluation instrument. So they'll have training on that and training on this at the summer, at summer leadership. And that's all I have unless you have any questions for me.
Are there questions for Ms. Thompson? Thank you. Next, we have our student services update with Mr. White.
Thank you, Chairman Powell and members of the board. Inside of your board packet, you will find the Star Academy report and the district release reassignment report through May the 27th, 2025. Mr. Matthews mentioned earlier, last week's graduations were very successful. I'd like to recognize the coordinators who made that happen. Mrs. Jasmine Hill at the Harriet County Early College, Mrs. Betty Strickland at Star and the Harriet Virtual Academy, Mrs. Corey Morris at OHS, Mrs. Cassidy Harvard at WHHS, Mrs. Angela Bowie at Harriet Central High School, and the dean of that group, Mrs. Ann Fennell at Triton High School. They all do an amazing job to coordinate graduations across the district and we appreciate their service. Here are a few quick updates from student services. I'd like to first publicly congratulate Mrs. Teager O'Neil, who's our high school counselor of the year, Mrs. Luann Jones, who was our middle school counselor of the year, and Mrs. Caitlin Peterson, who's our elementary school counselor of the year. Our school social worker of the year was Mrs. Wendy Whittington, and our school nurse of the year was Mrs. Janine Finn. All these professionals did an outstanding job for our school district this past year and excited to be able to honor them on this evening. In May, student services named our first honorary school social worker. Mr. Raymond Murphy, who serves as a custodian here at Central Services, was named our first honorary school social worker. He's done a lot of work behind the scenes for students at Star Academy in collaboration with the staff there. And we rewarded his efforts with this special designation last month. And so if, whenever he's on the break, whenever he's around, he's down there kind of helping lift things, do things, and really after hours at the services that they had for our McKinney Vento homeless students, foster students, or whatever, he was there serving meals and greeting parents. And so we honored him with that designation last month. The in-county reassignment period for the district reopens on July the 1st, 2025. As a reminder, in-county families who were approved for reassignment in previous years do not need to reapply again. That reassignment is good through the highest grade at their child's school. And so again, July 1st is that date and we'll get those approved at the school level as quickly as we can for our parents in the community. Finally, the Harriet Virtual Academy application remains open through July the 16th, 2025. We have two more parent sessions to go before our big acceptance week. Those dates are June the 11th, 2025, and June, July the 16th, 2025. And we'll have those virtual meetings with parents once again. This concludes my student support services report for this evening unless there are any questions.
Are there questions for Mr. White? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have our financial services report with Mr. Cox.
Thank you, Chair Powell, members of the board. In finance, we continue to work on summer setup for those employees who are working approved summer programs that have not started yet. June is also the second installment of our teacher supplements and payrolls, working on getting those ready to process for June payroll. Continuing, we're also continuing with our year-end cleanup and closeout, working to get our outstanding purchase order closed to help facilitate that closeout process, as well as other payroll-related items, getting ready for year-end processing. Although our auditors are not currently on site, technically, our audit for the year ending June 30th, 2025, has begun, as our auditors have already started requesting data and documents to begin their work. We're also working on next year's budget. And as you know, we lost a portion of our low-welt funding this year, although there's no state budget in place at this time. Both the Senate and the House have released their respective chamber budgets. The Senate budget directs DPI to propose a new low-welt formula but does not change the formula itself. That, they're asking DPI to change the formula, prevent, prevent the large swings, the unexpected highs, unexpected lows of the formula. And then in the House budget, they direct DPI to fund districts at the 24-25 level, meaning we would stay at the $5.7 million in the hole that we are for the next two years while allowing those districts that had unexpected huge increases to keep those large increases for the next two years. As you know, the Senate and House now have the conference to come up with a state budget. So there's still time to reach out to our legislators to work on a fix for '25-'26 if you feel led to do so. And I'm happy to have conversations with you on my recommendation, what we would like, if you're interested in that. That concludes my report unless you have any questions for me.
Are there questions for Mr. Cox?
I don't have any question, but I have a comment. Based on the commissioners' meeting this morning, it was a very encouraging meeting and kind of hard for me to do this right now, but I'm going to have to give Commissioner Jaggers a pat on the back because he's really going to bat for Harriet County Schools. And it's looking like, you know, I don't want to say it's going to happen. Obviously, we don't know, but it's very encouraging that we're going to get our funding that we requested to increase our supplements. So I'm looking forward to that.
Are there any others? Thank you, Mr. Cox. Moving along now to our public information office update, and that is Ms. Farrell.
Chairman Powell, members of the board and community, good evening. This school year has been filled with achievements and success with HCS. In May, we acknowledge Mental Health Awareness Month as Harriet County Schools expands mental health services for all students. Harriet County Schools kicked off Mental Health Awareness Month with a bang. We are proud to announce a new partnership with the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services and Hazel Health that provides free virtual mental health care services to all of our students during this school year and beyond. Harriet County Schools is among the first districts in North Carolina to launch this service as part of a broader initiative supported by an investment from the United Healthcare. This new support gives students access to licensed therapists at school and at home, ensuring every child has the opportunity to thrive emotionally and academically. School Nurse Day is, was May 7th, and we are grateful for the compassionate care, calm reassurance, and unwavering dedication of our stu, of our school nurses and that, what they provide to our students. Our health heroes are ready to help every child every day. Thank you for being the heart, skill, and care that you bring to our students. Welcome to Harriet County Schools. Harriet County Schools had the pleasure of hosting Dr. Elena Ashburn, who serves as the senior advisor for education policy to our governor, Josh Stein, on a school tour at Northwest Harriet Elementary School. Dr. Ashburn's visit is a part of her visiting school districts in North Carolina, meeting our hard-working educators, and listening to their success and challenges in the field of education. Of course, our superintendent shared his concerns and great successes as well. And hopefully, his feedback will make a difference in our great state. And there's no stopping us now. Harriet County Schools is on a move. We are proud to be recognized with the Purple Star Legacy Award. Harriet County Schools is proud to be the only school district in North Carolina to receive the state superintendent's district Purple Star Award for six consecutive years and the first to receive the Legacy Award. Special thanks to the Harriet Central High School, JROTC, for presenting the colors and the student speakers for sharing their experiences during the ceremony. Happy School Lunch Hero Day. We celebrated on May 2nd the incredible team behind every tray, every smile and nourishing meal served in our cafeteria. Our food service staff does more than prepare foods. They create warm, welcoming environments where every student feels seen and supported. And speaking of our heroes, free summer meals for kids this summer. Schools out, but healthy meals are still in. We are serving free meals to all children and teens. No registration, no ID, just show up and eat. Children ages one through 18 must be present to receive a meal, and meals do not have to be consumed on the site this summer. You can find the locations on the screen here as well as our website and social media pages. Happy retirement as we honor and celebrate our incredible retirees for their years of dedicated service to Harriet County Schools. Their commitment has shaped countless lives and left lasting legacies in our classroom, hallways, and in the hearts of all that they have touched. And graduation. Last week, we proudly celebrated the achievements of the class of 2025 across our high schools. From tassels to turns to proud cheers, it was a week to remember and our students are leaving their mark. Major shout out to our graduation coordinators and Mr. Jermaine White for coordinating our graduation ceremonies. Harriet County Schools had a total of 1,596 graduates who collectively earned $24.7 million in scholarships this year. 184 more students graduated in 2025 versus 2024. $8.8 million increase in scholarships for 2024 and 2025 school year. We have doubled the amount of scholarships awarded since 2023. We are proud of their hard work, dedication, and bright futures. And that's a wrap for the 2024-2025 school year. What a year this has been. From welcoming our new superintendent, our academic achievements and athletic wins to lasting memories, our students, staff, and families have made this year one to remember. Thank you to our incredible teachers, staff, and administrators for your dedication and to our families for your continued support. I pray everyone has a safe and fun, restful summer. We'll see you in August. Chairman Powell, this completes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Farrell. Questions from Ms. Farrell? Okay, thank you. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve consent agenda, Mr. Chairman.
Have a motion and a second. Consent agenda, chairman votes aye.
Abate, aye.
Gania.
Hearing no nay votes, the motion is approved. Next, we have action items. And our first one this evening is review and consider school nutrition bid renewals for the 2025-2026 school year. Mr. Pearson.
Chairman Powell, members of the board, you may remember at last month's meeting, we approved several bids for child nutrition suppliers. This is two additional lots, groceries, and beverages. You do only see two numbers here because Cisco was the only ones that did bid on this, a slight per case increase from last year. But on the recommendation of Ms. Brown, she does believe that these are the best options to go with.
Mr. Chairman, pursuant to the recommendations from child nutrition and assistant superintendent, move that we approve the new bid pricing as presented.
Have a motion and a second. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, chairman votes aye.
Abate, aye.
Gania.
Hearing no nay votes, the motion is approved. Next, we have review and consider approval of the 2025-2026 Alternative Schools Modified Accountability System. Ms. Ferguson.
Yes, Chairman Powell, members of the board, the state allows our alternative schools to follow a different accountability model. And each year, STAR does participate in that model. And this way, the scores stay at STAR. Their school performance is determined on a different model than what our traditional schools are. And we have completed the form for participation. Would like to submit it for the 25-26 school year.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the 2025-2026 Alternative Schools Modified Accountability System as presented.
We have a motion and a second. Is there additional discussion? Hearing none, chairman votes aye.
Abate, aye.
Gania.
Hearing no nay votes, the motion carries.
Thank you.
I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we go into closed session pursuant to General Statute 143, 31811, A1, A3, and A6, to prevent the disclosure of confidential personnel files under GS 115C 321, to consider matters relating to initial employment of an individual employee, and to consult with the board's attorney in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege.
We have a motion and a second. Is there additional discussion? Chairman votes aye.
Abate, aye.
Gania.
Hearing no nay votes, the motion is approved. We are now in closed session. We are now in closed session.
Following the motion and a second, we're now back in open session. Mr. Matthews, do you have anything for us?
Yes Chairman Powell, I would like to recommend approval of the list of recommended teacher contracts as discussed in closed session.
I'll entertain a motion.
Motion approved, Mr. Chairman.
Have a motion and a second, this is a personnel matter. Chairman votes aye.
Abate aye.
Gani aye.
Grogbraa aye.
Arrow aye.
Hearing none, no votes, the motion carries. Is there anything else? Hearing none, I'll entertain, yes sir Mr. Abate.
Pursuant to the closed session minutes as presented in closed session, I move that we approve those.
Have a motion and a second, it's a traditional discussion. Chairman votes aye.
Abate aye.
Gani aye.
Grogbraa aye.
Arrow aye.
Hearing none, no votes, the motion carries. Anything else? I'll entertain a motion.
A motion withdrawn, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, I want a favor, say aye please.
Aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.